For the special counsel work session meeting of May 17th, 2023. Good evening, everybody. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Noel?
Here.
Ms. Welpin?
Here.
Ms. Atra?
Here.
Changing it up a little, sorry.
Sure, it's okay.
Mr. Daga?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentili?
Yeah.
Dr. Wong?
Here.
Good evening. Would you all please join me in setting the question? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is established, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first agenda item this evening is approval of the council minutes of April 19th and 26th. Do we first have a motion regarding the minutes of the 19th?
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Atra?
Yes.
Ms. Welpin?
Yes.
Mr. Daga?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentili?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
All right, next, the motion for the approval of the minutes of April 26th, please.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, there's an error on the roll call on the civil service commission. I'm listed and I wasn't there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll fix that, thank you.
I did have one question, just as a matter of process. So, we had a pretty robust discussion about the roads and infrastructure piece, and I don't know if it's reflected here, do we just refer people to the recording?
A lot of times when we have a lengthy discussion, I try to put parts, pieces, parts in, and I usually get called out for taking things out of context because it is such a lengthy discussion.
It's hard, yes, that's why it's very hard.
And I refer people to the recording of the meeting.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, so that just seems to help.
Okay.
Because it's so easy to take things out of context when it's a discussion that lengthy.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure how you work on it when you're trying to balance the, you know, the product that is the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
But one part is heavier in the conversation.
Yeah, it's tough.
Okay, so that's how we do it, okay.
That said, anything else? Subject to the correction that Tony has pointed out, roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Atra?
Yes.
Ms. Welpin?
Yes.
Mr. Daga?
Abstain.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentili?
Abstain.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
Great. Next is the featured part of our presentation this evening. This would be Resolution 2023-04. We are coming before the council tonight to request approval for a proposal for us to install a small splash pad facility adjacent to the playground in the back. This would, this is essentially almost an extension of the playground. As you all know, the playground is, receives an extraordinary high volume of little kid traffic. This is a little kid feature. I don't expect anyone in here in their bathing suit to be really participating in the splash park unless maybe you have a small child or grandchild with you. It's, Jim Advent is going to be operating a presentation for us this evening. The reason that we're doing this is, people ask about it, why don't we have a community center, why don't we have a swimming pool? We're not going to, we're not going to have a community center that I foresee, we're not going to have a swimming pool that I foresee. This is a, the other communities around us do not have this sort of feature in their playgrounds. When I've seen it, it's very popular with these children. It's a great opportunity for us right now to do it because there's an ODNR grant available. It's the same grant, the Nature Works grant, that we constructed the restroom facility in the back, the playground itself, and it's a very nice grant program that does these sort of things.
Is the grant limited to a splash pad or is it recreational facility?
It's for recreational type of things. We noodled it around as to what would be a nice addition for the children out there, and the splash pad seemed to be the overwhelming favorite. It is something that was referred to in our community survey as something that some respondents would like to see. There weren't that many of any particular, other than sidewalks, there wasn't that big of a response about anything in particular. This was, this does show up on the heat map or whatever the phrases for the language. It's a nice addition. The spend is pretty limited for us. Jim will explain it more. The grant is up to $150,000. There's a 25% contribution from the city. We've been dealing with a local vendor that Jim will get into more, and it seems to run a basic splash pad, $275,000 to $300,000. So, the city contribution, if we were to get the full amount of the 150, would be anywhere from $125,000 to $150,000.
Were there, besides a splash pad, were there options two, three, and four that you kicked around as far as alternative ways to spend the potential grant funds?
Well, we thought about, we could add an additional pavilion on that far end. It didn't have a lot of support. We have our pavilion, this is our first year of requiring people to reserve it for parties, which has been working out well. It's cut back on conflict and competition on certain days when everyone shows up for their six-year-old birthday party at the same time, and at least give someone standing to lay claim to the facility. And it's, I'll let Jim do it, let him present it, he knows a lot more about it than I do.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
And we will judge later on Jim's PowerPoint capabilities.
As the mayor said, this is kind of the agenda of what's going on in this presentation, the Nature Works grant being first. We, as the mayor also said, we abused it in the past, that most recently was the playground was installed under this grant. This grant's $150,000 max, 75, 25, splitting up. From what I understand, there's substantial money available under Nature Works, so we want to make sure that we're going after the right amounts, and all the grants are reimbursable grant, it's a pay, we pay upfront, and then those grant money would reimburse us as the labor and all, everything's covered under the grant, so you can use anything. Our grant deadline is June 1st, 2023, and then it'll be used for the next year. Our proposal is to try to build a splash park, splash pad, splash park, splash zones, there is all like a relatively the same term, there's no one thing, it's kind of like Jacuzzi whirlpool and hot tub, they're all generic terms for the same thing. The proposal is to put this in the park adjacent to the playground area, so we would have more opportunities for continuous movement on hard surface from the parking lot all the way to the facilities like we have now. We're trying to keep that, that direction going, that way we don't have little paths running all over the park to different features. Have everything centrally located, so if somebody's looking to have their kids on the playground and another kid happens to be on the splash pad, it would be, that would be available to them. This, a splash pad is probably, we were told, one of the fastest-growing municipal recreation facilities in parks today. They're more popular than swimming pools because they are zero water entry, some have little, you know, small amounts of water in the lower spots, but they're basically flat, flat surfaces, so the need for lifeguards is not necessary, which is one of the reasons why most recreation departments, swimming pools close early. You lose two months of swimming because the lifeguard's working right at college, so that's one of the deals with these splash pads you don't need to do. They have, you have abilities to shut them off, they have timers, so the water will not go on, say, at night, or, you know, like, they're not continuous running, so that's one of the... Our primary goal is to try to get this up and running, if approved, by the summer of 2024. It's not, not an un-reaching goal, we could definitely make that goal if we get started early enough, and early enough means making sure that we apply for the grant in time. As the mayor said, there was mention of this in the surveys about aquatics in the city of Pepper Pike, and that was one of the, one of the things people ask for, younger kids mainly, but me personally, I've seen older, I've seen adults walking through splash pads, I've seen people in wheelchairs walking through splash pads. It's a sensory, it's a, the reason that they give so many, they give grants and stuff towards it, because it's multi-sensory, it's multi-generational, and it promotes health and activity, so that's one of the main reasons why they're so fast-growing. Benefits of the splash park, as I've said, you know, in the neighborhoods, it's small, it's compact, it's usable, most times of the day, you extend the seasons with it. It engages the entire family, so if it's, if it's young kids or middle-aged kids, you're not going to see high schoolers playing them generally, but you might be one, so that's what's, that's what's out there. And it does promote physical activity, and it encourages interactive play with the different stuff, things that are happening on the pad itself. This is kind of a maintenance breakdown because there are two different types of splash pads. There's a splash pad which has an off-site that uses fresh water constantly, and the wastewater drains off into its stream or sources. It is a cheaper way to build a splash pad because there's less mechanics to it, but it has a higher cost on the long run. The pad that we are talking about, or we are proposing would be a filtered pad, the water will be regent or clean and re-sprayed out as opposed to just going off, and it would be replenished as, you know, I think it has an automatic replenishment system, so if it would run down so many gallons, it would refill itself. But, so, the daily cost would be a little more, but it is definitely saves water.
Just the water cost, that's the difference between the two?
Yes, because the water does not get wasted, it's, you're regenerating the water, filtering it.
It's basically a swimming pool or a water reservoir beneath the concrete pad.
Yeah, that's, and that's one of the larger ticket items we have.
Jim, could you say those numbers out loud? I, my vision is not great, and, and I can't see really what it says. If I had to print out it this, it would be amazing, but could you just tell me?
The recycled, the recycled system for maintenance can, we figure the yearly cost is $15,000.
Okay.
And a drainway system is $59,600.
Okay, so almost $60,000.
So.
And that's per year?
Yes, and that would be...
And the season for this? Sorry to interrupt, but what are we anticipating that year to be?
I believe your season could go, well, you could get in September, you could get...
Starting in June?
You could start in probably mid-May, maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe, I mean, it was 80 last week.
Yesterday, but not today.
It's 32 tonight, you know, but the thing about them are, is it's not something that you have to heat the water, so you're not, like, it's, it's water in a tank of ground, we're not heating the water and stuff like that, so as a swimming pool, you would need to find a control.
Is it winterized? Like, do you flush it?
You would shut it off, yes, you would shut it off in the winter.
Okay, so we'd have to be careful.
Yes, you would have to, like, you can set a season only so far, you know, if you could get all of September, which, there are places, the ones that are not fenced in areas by swimming pools are generally open later in the year, so you could go along that route.
And our maintenance cost, is that including winterization or?
Uh, yes, I think that's in there.
Okay, again, my eyesight is terrible from here, so, so, I'm sorry.
So, Jim, the biggest line item here is the sewer cost, $39,000 a year?
Well, when they're, when they're building, when, you know, obviously when we're looking at stuff like that, we have sewer, our water is not tied into, well, this, I'm...
Why couldn't it, it's fresh water, right? Why couldn't it be discharged into the creek?
You can't, you really, you really cannot, that's a, no.
Why?
Because it's chlorinated water, it's not, it's not rain, it's not, it's tap water, right? You can't just run a hose into the creek, you're actually creating a problem for the creek.
Why is that?
It's an EPA guideline, because there's chlorine in the water, you'll kill the fish and stuff there. It's not, it's, you don't take water from the tap and just put it right in the fish tank.
It's an illegal discharge, we're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, it's an illicit discharge is what it comes down to.
That's why a drain, that's why a drainway system is, there's problems with that.
What for that, but that's...
But what you're asking, I think what you're asking is, where is the sewer cost? Well, there's, you know, in certain cities, not in this city, in certain cities, that, you know, when you pay your water bill, you also pay your sewer bill based on your water, your water consumption.
Where does the water go here? Is it tied to the sewers?
Yeah, yeah, it's tied to the sewers, yeah, so.
So what is that last number? I can't see if it's 59 or 69 total.
59, 634.
Okay.
Almost all that is the sewer cost, though.
Yeah, there is a great sewer cost.
You said this is, this is treated with chlorine or UV?
Chlorine or bromine.
Or bromine, not UV, just chlor, okay.
Chlorine or bromine.
Even the drainway system or the drainage?
No, the drainway system has no chlorine cost, you see, it's a no.
So it's tap water for the drainway?
Drainway system is tap water, yeah.
And then that can't go in the sink or no?
No, you can't, you can't run the tap water into the creek.
So is that, the sewer cost number there is calculated based on?
Water consumption.
Water consumption?
Yeah.
Okay, so the water is treated?
In a drain, in a filtered system, recycled, they call it a recycled system, yes, the water is filtered, added chlorine, bromine, whatever.
So that's what you're talking about?
Yes, and that's what, it's, in essence, it's greener because you're not just pouring water down a drain.
And then, does this include maintenance, like, you know, repairs, upgrades, updating?
Maintenance start-up and shutdown hours are in there.
And what's the useful life of the equipment?
That's, that's all subjective, and so you take care of it, it will last.
And this is kind of like pool equipment, right?
Generally, yes, yeah, except you have water shooting out of the ground instead of jumping into the ground.
So you have bigger pumps, but then you have...
Actually, the filtration system and the pump system is smaller, is pretty small because the amount of water is more pressurized, so they're running it from big pipe down to small pipe, which pressurizes it, which you use less water. I don't know exactly the, the exact wear and tear on their equipment.
But there would be five, 10 years you have to replace it just because it wears out?
Yeah, depending on, yeah, so.
And are there water tests, like, does water testing occur with that? Like, growing up, we had a, you know, we had a role.
You would have to have somebody that, there would be somebody trained on how to read the chemicals.
Like, hourly, daily, weekly, what's?
They had said that it was a daily thing.
Okay.
But if you want, you know.
So one of the service people could do that? A service person could do that?
Yes, a service person would be taught to do that. This is the area we're talking about, you'll see the bottom half there is where the twin sets are, so that's a 30-foot circle. We will have a little bit of trees to move, or remove, as it would say, 30 feet, this room is maybe 22 feet, so you're talking a 30-foot pad, if you want to look at it in this room, it's this whole room, so it's, it's generous enough to have, you know, a few kids on it, quite a few. And, so this is the area we're talking about, and that's why I say where it's adjacent to, so that somebody could have a kid in both spots at the same time and be safe.
Does it need to be that big? Is there a choice to be made, 20, 30, 25, is it, whatever you want?
Yeah.
You could, you could downsize it if you, you know, depending on, when we talked about
that, we looked at the amount of kids that are in the playground at a certain, at certain times, and there's times when there's 30 kids in there. There's also times when there's three, so you build it for the high times or you build it for the low times, it's, you know. This is the representation of what we're talking about. 30-foot circle, it has all above-ground features, everything sprays up out of the ground.
What's the surface they're standing on?
Concrete.
It's concrete?
Yes.
So it's not, it's not, there's not even a depression, it's just?
No.
Is it great?
Well, it, it points, it slopes a little.
Okay.
So water runs, so water would run off, or the water would run to the middle and get down into the filters.
Okay.
But yes, there would be some, you know, there is some slope, but not noticeable enough where you're going to have that big of a problem with movement around the pad.
Is concrete the recommended surface, just with?
You'll see some that have, like, a padded surface.
Like a smushy, like what we have on the playground?
Yes, what we have out there, it's, you know, roughly in three-quarters of an inch to an inch thick, and they're colored, they're...
I just worry about, like, little, little people falling on wet cement, like, oh.
What they say is, is stain it, don't paint it. If you paint it, it creates a slippery surface.
Okay.
And they've had that problem in other cities, but if they, if you stain the concrete, it's more of a blended color, so the color is permanent.
They're small children, they're not standing, they're... Jumping.
Jumping, yes, yes.
Bumping into each other.
But you can go with the, we didn't actually place the pad into this proposal just because it was substantially higher than you're trying to keep the cost, you know, being this is our small old pad.
What do other cities do about injuries that are caused, especially on a concrete surface?
Pardon me?
What do other cities do about the liability for injuries caused, especially on a concrete
Well, it's going to be a rough surface like a, like a pool deck surface.
It's not smooth like your garage floor.
Yeah.
It's more of a, I don't want to say broom finish, but it's more of a swol finish where it has a texture on it.
But it's hard, and if you fall, it hits your teeth on it or something like that.
You get a worse scrape on that surface, speaking from...
You would have that.
Just another question, the CDC recommends that people take showers before they do these things?
No.
Well, I'm looking at that they do.
They do?
Yes.
All right, I, yeah, I guess you can, but we, I have never seen one where there was a shower involved. I seen one in the middle of Rapid City, South Dakota, right in the middle of town, and kids are walking right off the street, walking right to the pool, or walking right to the splash pad, so I guess you can do any, you know, you can do any of that if you wanted.
I just, I was just asking because I was reading, CDC has a page, a page on splash pad.
And they also, I think, I believe it says in there, there's no swim diapers, kids, you know, everybody, and certain different things. How do you stop some of that stuff? I don't know, you know, don't, don't go in there if you're sick with diarrhea or, you know.
How do we stop that, though, that's the question?
Yeah, how do you do any of that?
Stop somebody who's sitting on, on the surface?
Yeah, you don't, so. This is actually the, without kids involved, you see the sprayheads, larger sprayheads in the middle. What they do is, they zone these things, kind of like a sprinkler system, where certain sections go on at different times, so you could move kids from that large area to that smaller area. It kind of moves the kids around so they're not standing in the same place, it gives them different opportunities. You see the red handle there, or that, that would be a start button, that's original, they walk on and they hit that start button, and that's, that moves the thing along. So it's not a constant running feature.
So it runs for, it runs for 10 minutes or whatever?
It will run for 10 minutes and then stop, and somebody will have to come back around and hit the button again, kind of, so it's not a constant running feature.
Does anybody around here have one of these?
Yes.
Who does?
Lynnhurst.
Lynnhurst?
Yeah, they have one in Brainerd, is that Brainerd?
Is it part of their, is it part of a pool or is it separate by itself?
I believe it's, I believe it's in a complex, that was their old swing, so. Hudson has one, Maynardville has one, Twinsburg, I think, has one, I don't, maybe Beechwood, I'm not really sure what they have in their comp.
I don't think Beechwood has one.
Independence has one, let me actually look at theirs.
Reminder though.
Lynnhurst, Brainerd.
Is it on Brainerd? Kyle's Falls.
They charge a fee, though.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a fee and that's fenced, I believe.
What you see here is a cost breakdown for the equipment of that pad that I just showed you, so you get an idea, this is equipment alone, this is no labor, no, no ground clearing, no, no construction cost, straight equipment cost. So you see, it is a pretty sophisticated, has a, you know, recirculated filtration system, it's probably the biggest piece in that puzzle, at...
So that's equipment, that's before any concrete or anything?
That's before anything, that is just the mechanics of it.
Pipes?
Pipes.
Pumps, et cetera.
Sprayheads, all of that, yes.
Wow. And that scales up and down with size, I would presume, right?
Yes, well, yes and no, because yes, it does scale up, it gets bigger, you add more, but, you know, you buy one filter and that filter runs the whole deal.
Sure.
So the biggest piece would be, you know, is the filter or the manifold system that directs the different, different pieces there.
Could you announce the number again, Jim? Can you please?
It says, it's 102.065.
Okay, thank you, $102,000.
$102,000.
Okay. But that's not the cost of the full project, that's the equipment, that's the equipment.
Because we don't know what's going to happen with construction costs, and to get somebody to come in and just give us a straight construction cost was like, we have, we have one turnkey, and that was, another one, it's not, it's broke down, is this, but it's also missing some of the pieces that this is, like a filter house, filter house, I mean, that didn't have that, so really, it's not a turnkey, and that was about 100, or 240, 250,000.
All in.
All in.
And, and before, earlier, I think we said 275 to 300?
Yeah, but that other one is, like I said, is missing some pieces that...
Gotcha, gotcha.
So...
So this one's about...
And they were guesstimating, we talked to Don about this, and he said, you know, you can figure, if you wait another year, you're looking at another 10% probably on construction costs, so.
Have you?
Concrete would be so volatile right now.
Have you talked to any of the other communities that have these and talked about how they do during the winter, and if there are any issues with...
I did not discuss startups as to what breaks over winter, no.
Just their general experience, I want to know, what maintenance issues have they had, what complaints have they had, what injuries have they had, if any, what problems? Unanticipated maintenance?
That kind of stuff, it's, you know, I think that it's like, and I guess it would be like anything else, you clean it out, right? You don't have, you don't have that, that water in there that's going to freeze and crack.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, with anything we do, we have that problem almost every year with the restroom.
Just in general, what... Just in general, what, what, we don't know what we don't know, and just having conversations with two or three service directors at those communities and saying, what surprised you about this installation and maintenance? If anything, operationally?
We can have that, yeah, we can have those conversations here. We have had those conversations both times.
And there might also be some common points of interest, Orange Rec, which, which our community is a part of, does have water features, low, you know, zero-intruder features, features at the pool, which our community is a part of. So, yeah, so that is, you know, I think some people in the community, to the other earlier point, we do have a community pool. It's just, it's just shared with other communities. So, but they, but they have a significant maintenance program for that. And also a safety and hygiene program, so that would be a, there'd be a lot of common conversations.
And as a sitting member of the Rec Commission, I'll just toss out there, they're doing a refresh on it. So they've invested dollars in that for our community, and it is an asset for all of us to use.
The other thing, just to find out, who built theirs? How, how the bidding process went, were they happy with the work?
The people that gave us this proposal right here was the company that was servicing Lynnhurst.
Did they build Lynnhurst?
Yes, because this equipment is, is like their, their package. So yes, and then they, I think Lynnhurst has more above-ground features, and so they, they do the maintenance work on those above-ground features.
Yeah.
But we're just looking mainly at low-ground, no-ground.
The maintenance costs you have are projected by the equipment supplier?
Yes.
Okay, be great to get Lynnhurst's experience, whether that matches up with what they?
Well, and I'm kind of curious from Lynnhurst, so if they're charging for that amenity, I mean, seeing that this would be a no-cost amenity, we wouldn't be making anything from it, not that that's the intent. But that it would be costing us something to run, what made them decide to charge for that? Was it because of, of usage, they needed to limit the number of people in there? Is it to help maintain it? Like, I'm, I'm kind of curious as to why and what, then what we could learn from that and, and make decisions? And are they also trying? Well, but why did they fence it in? Was it to keep animals out, was it to control the population that was used, I don't know, I don't know the answers to that.
Or is it a legality sort of thing, I don't know, you know, with any pool, you have to have a fence.
Yeah, but with splash pads, you don't, most splash pads are not fenced, that's.
But is it, is it a good?
There was no drawing.
Animals out?
Right, and that's, and that's the whole thing about lifeguards. There's no lifeguards either because there's no standing water for somebody to drown in.
Right.
If you're, you know, and not that you can't get hurt, don't, you know, not, you know, downplaying that fact that something could fall and you're hurt, but.
Well, and if we thought about what children then going onto the playground equipment that we have existing, so they get wet, they're slippery, and then they go to climb up the slide and they get injured there, like.
Yeah.
It's like, because it's right on top, it's right there, which.
They could also just eaten a, a bag of ice cream or something and been slippery to our.
You got all of that work that's working.
Thanks for the suggestion.
Uh, here's our timeline, obviously May twenty is now, and we're trying to get the, this proposal to you folks so we could apply for the DNR grant, the, I mean, the O D N R grant. Like I said, June first is the deadline for that, so we really need to expedite if we're gonna do that because that's, that's the driving factor of our funding. It says November, they said, you know, when we talked to the vendors, they were like, the earlier you get it to us, the better chance you have opening on your deadline, on your deadline date.
Are there multiple bidders available for this?
Yes, this is actually a Sourcewell thing. The, the company that we were looking at is a Sourcewell company. They are the, the company we talked to primarily is the supplier of the equipment. And then they have contractors and different contractors would obviously bid different pricing. But they're, they're, them being Sourcewell, their pricing's gonna be pretty close to all the way around, because they have to.
Remind us?
We also asked Jamie Schneider, who built the playground up here, if, you know, if they would be interested, and he was the other company, but he uses a different brand of equipment. And not knowing anybody with that equipment, we, we took it into consideration.
Well, he could, he could give you references where.
But he can, yeah, and there are other people out there.
Yeah, a little more diligence on that one.
Yes, there's more people out there, like I said, we're, our biggest thing is to get this thing out in front, out in front here. So we can start with the grant.
Remind us what Sourcewell is?
Sourcewell's a buying group, kind of like the state purchasing, you know.
So they do all the pre, you know, qualifications?
Is it, how is it, is it sanctioned by the state, or?
Yeah, Sourcewell is a national buyer group.
National buyer group.
Yeah, it used to be NJPA. Those are.
But they're a private company, they're not part of the state, it's not like gov deals or something, it's.
Gov, yeah, those, I mean, they're all, they're all, I guess Sourcewell's just, they're just a buyer group.
Okay.
You subscribe, the city subscribes to Sourcewell, we fly our trucks through with Sourcewell.
And under your code, because it's a co-op program.
Yeah.
They, they separately bid it and you benefit from not having to go out for bids for what they have bid.
Right.
It's a, it's a workaround of, of the public bidding.
They bid it for you, and they take a fee on that, then?
I'm sure they do.
Yeah, there's a small, I mean, I, it doesn't show up on anything, we're a member group. That's all I know, is we're a member group of Sourcewell, and.
Is there an annual?
The money is built, it's built in, it's built into the bid, so we don't see how much they're taking.
And there was an application process.
So we don't know how much we're saving and?
We, well, we would have to, we'd have to bid both ways, you're right.
Yeah.
We don't know, because they are taking, they are, they're making money because they have to.
They have to make it somewhere, right, so there's a markup or a fee?
It's, it's marked, it's built in and we can't see it, I would imagine. We could ask.
No, I'm sure it's marked up.
Oh, I know.
What Sourcewell benefits is that the entire advertising bidding process is taken care of internally to them, so they deserve a fee. No, no question, it's just having that.
We just don't, we just don't know.
No, we don't.
If we want to afford F one fifty, we go to the Sourcewell dealer and we're getting the price that, so we're not going to Liberty here, Liberty there, Preston over here, we, we don't have to go to shop around.
Just in general, as a point, just as a general point, I, I would think that we are entitled to know what their markup is, or we're certainly entitled to ask. Not on this, not just on this, on anything, and it might be good for us to know that. It would be something I would ask if it was my personal.
We're assuming, we don't, we don't have any, there's no market check on Sourcewell acquisitions. We're just assuming it's a good price, but do you ever?
Well, when they tell us at Sourcewell, that, that stops us from going in shopping, because we know we're getting the best price. Okay, they, they deal with all the companies, yes.
This is a question, that was a very nice, extensive presentation, and requires a lot of thought and detail. I was just wondering what the timeline was before the presentation tonight, because it's only two weeks until June first for us to choose through this. Who was part of that group discussion and how long has this been in discussion?
We started talking, we started talking about this last May, I believe last May, we were too late for the last year's grant. Because the last year's grant, we actually started doing most of our legwork too close to the fact to submit for a grant.
So the whole discussion sort of lay fallow for a long time. And then when we did the community survey, we decided, well, let's see if there's any support in the survey for this sort of thing, before we just kick it off, because that'll be the question, do people even think about this or want it? So we go back and now, this is our, you know, a meeting pretty soon after we finally got our survey results. So, yes, I, it is crushing the time a little, but.
So we as a?
The group was the administration.
The administration, including?
The mayor, myself, Joe, Becky, it's executive assistant. Rachel was the person who was working on a lot of this stuff, so she was part of the conversation as well.
Because, I mean, we wrote an infrastructure, we had a meeting, we didn't discuss this at all, so it's just, I was just looking at the survey results, I didn't see anything about a specific splash pool. So mayor, where exactly is that in here?
I'm sitting here, Kathy, I can't tell you. I know I've read Splashpad, see the comments?
I think I have it up, and it says most common missing amenity.
Right.
Mayor, we, we have.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I have it up.
Yeah, but I believe it's in the section under the most common missing community amenity, and to that response, it was fifty-four residents for community pool slash aquatic center.
Which includes a pool.
Which includes a pool.
Which includes a pool, but not a specific splash.
Yeah.
Although that, that then.
Which is below, you think of in the fall, and below community recreation center, and below street lighting and usable park outdoor recreation space, so. I was just curious.
I have to say, I too have a little concern with the, the timing, if a project's been on the table for that long, that we're now seeing something two weeks before a grant application's due.
If households aren't comfortable, doesn't want to do it, we don't do it.
Well, the other thing is that.
I've explained why we waited, we waited for.
I'm not, that's fine, I can still express that I would appreciate being part of a conversation for a project like this and having a little bit more time to consider it, instead of tabling it until now, so you can disagree with me, but that's.
We don't have to do it now, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to push it.
That timeline, that timeline is pretty clear with apply for the two thousand.
That's if we want to do it now, I mean, if you don't want to do it now, we don't do it now.
This, this resolution obligates us to do it if we apply for the grant and get it.
Right, right, and if people are uncomfortable, we don't do it. If, if we apply for this, is it tied to this project?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have to, and then we have to spend it for that project, so.
It'd have to be spent for that project.
Why don't, why don't we see what answers Jim can get between now and next week, when we have a meeting?
Right.
Talk about it again and then see if we're comfortable.
That's what I suggest.
Clearly, we're not comfortable yet.
Right.
But we have a week and, you know, maybe some.
But I must say.
Get those answers.
I must say, I do agree that this is coming in pretty late if it's been discussed for this long.
I, I think it's kind of crushed, I'm, I'm not disagreeing.
And, and just in, in, in keeping, I, I also agree, I think that, you know, we, we would be in a position, even next week, where we would have to suspend the rule, I generally have, and just because of my prior experience of discomfort with that, because it's the rule. I, I also, though, would have loved to even six months or nine months ago, just have heard, you know, about this as a possibility, kind of not pushed, pushed around this idea, maybe even talked about alternative ideas, because I do think, and I applaud the commitment to the children in our community. And really, the question is, you know, is this the project, do we like this project, is it appropriate? So the idea of whether we should do something, I think, you know, and there's grant money out there, something for the kids, isn't necessarily the conversation, it's the timing and what project, so, yeah, that, that is a concern.
And, and as a part of the due diligence, could the law director give us an idea of the liability potentials on these things?
You, you have at least two forms of immunity, one is the standard twenty-seven forty-four immunity that you have as a political subdivision. The other is, if you do not charge a fee, this is subject to recreational user immunity, which means that you won't be held liable for it, because it's open to the public and there's no fee charges. Basically, the state law says if you want to go on somebody's property for recreational purposes, you're, you're, you know, you're on your own, good luck.
Assuming the risk.
But I would also mention that while liability is an important concern, if there is risk, whether we have liability or not, that is our concern. So if children are put at risk, obviously, we all universally care, you know, if we think that it's not an appropriate circumstance. So that, you know, but yes, liability is very important.
Steve, what's that, the, the, the second reference you had to, is that statutory?
Yes.
What is that, you have that reference, Andy? I'm just not familiar with that.
Title fifteen. I want to say it's like fifteen thirty-three.
So this Nature Works grant that we can apply for can be used for rehabilitation of a public park and things like that, right? So what about, we built the restroom with the grant money, could we help kind of winterize restroom for this cycle? For the grant proposal for this year, since that's one of the interests?
That's where the, the grant money would go.
No, I know, if we want to write the grant for winterizing the bathroom, you know, which residents have expressed interest in, maybe we could do that for this grant cycle, do June first? I don't know, and then discuss the splash park more and see if it's worthwhile or, you know, cost.
We don't even know if it's feasible to winterize.
No, I know, yeah, but we, that could be.
But your broader point is, if we apply for a grant, there's multiple potential purposes to upgrade our park, yeah. And this is just one idea, it's a decent idea, I agree, it'd be, I've had my little kids, they would love to come to this, I have no doubt, they would, it would be a, a good day out, so I, I just, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, what else would I do with the park with grant money if I had it, I have no idea even to. I mean, what we have out there is fantastic, and it's a huge upgrade from what it was ten years ago, and it's, it's a marvelous facility that gets a lot of use, so.
Maybe we could form like a little parks subgroup or something to talk about, I don't know, with residents and.
Did you find that, Steve?
Yeah, it's fifteen thirty, chapter fifteen thirty-three.
And it would be nice just to know, not necessarily just for this specific conversation, but what the parameters of the O D N R Nature Works grants are, because it would be good to kind of always have that in mind, as long as that grant exists, and maybe as we hear of other things or see other things, have an awareness of what projects would be applicable to this grant, because I think, and what other communities have done with this grant, I would be really curious to know. It would help us maybe formulate ideas, make decisions.
They said you could either even acquire land with it, acquisition, development, rehabilitation of public park and recreation areas. And on the website, it has every year that, you know, what they've awarded to each city and how much, so that's a good kind of point we could use, because they've installed security fans, pavilions, basketball courts, accessible features, dog parks, parking lots for a dog park, resurfacing, there's a lot of different things we could think about using for asking for the grant.
I just don't want to get in the habit of chasing grants.
Right.
That we are looking for a project to fit dollars that are available, because that, to me, just doesn't make sense. Is it something that the community wants, is it something that we would be willing to pay for regardless of a grant? If yes, and there's a grant, yes, absolutely, win-win-win. But looking, looking at this and then trying to say, ooh, well, maybe I can put this here, or maybe I could, like, I, I think that we're, we're just not going about the process in the proper fashion, or at least not in my preferred fashion, which is to plan and then move forward.
Wow. This, I just read that section, Steve, that's pretty broad.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty sweeping, it should, you know, gives me some comfort about that exposure here. Still a safety concern, we want to make it safe, but from, from a liability concern, that is, that provision to take a look at it, no, it's very sweeping.
It's, it's, it's immune, yeah, immunity piece, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that immunity, that, it's, it's fifteen thirty-three eighteen one. I'm, I'm okay with, let's defer to next week and, and see what you can get in terms of feedback from Lynnhurst and any other questions we'd ask, and.
We'll see what we can come up with.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's it, so any other questions?
Okay, great, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
That was a very nice job, thank you.
Good powerpoint, it was a really good powerpoint.
Whoever you're taking up your.
Okay, let's move along. Our next agenda item is a motion to enter into a reimbursement agreement in Cuyahoga County to purchase agreement for the regional all hazards response vehicle. This is in relation to the regional command vehicle that Pepper Pike hosted under its authority within the last year. Chief Fraser, why don't you catch council up as to what this aspect is?
Yes, we saw a need in the area for a, you know, command vehicle. For the cities in Cuyahoga County, there was not one available, and we saw that. So a grant was available for that under FEMA, assistance to firefighter grant. So we were, we received that grant. It paid for ninety percent of the vehicle. Ten percent of that was then the city's responsibilities, which Cuyahoga County. Ten percent of that was then the city's responsibilities, which Cuyahoga County, public safety picked up to ten percent. So the vehicle itself was a hundred percent paid for. The only thing that it did not include was some of the ancillary equipment. So radios, a mask with a light on it. There was some connectivity that goes with it to tie in internet and phones and some computers. So we went to LEPC, which each county and actually in the country has an LEPC, local emergency planning commission. It's under their federal right to know. Those are established and funded. So they committed fifty percent of the funds for them, LEPC did. And then the other fifty percent were receiving from county council under ARPA funds. So a hundred percent of the ancillary equipment that we paid for through the county as well. We're just being the fiduciary, it's a proper term, we're the fiduciary for that. So what went through us, we have to have the agreements with the county then. So we already did the agreement with the initial vehicle and the cost share. This would be the second agreement with the LEPC. The third agreement would then be with county council, the ARPA fund.
So we, we're, we took the lead, I recall this, we took the lead on this vehicle. So we're like the lead city just getting things going here.
Yes.
And, and so this agreement is just to get the money back from the county basically that-
Yeah.
Okay, to reimburse us.
No, this is new, this is completely new equipment.
I, I know, for the, for this vehicle, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But this agreement is just to get the money reimbursed to us?
Yes.
Okay. And how many communities will use this?
So we had, in the MOU, we had a, had an MOU with the cities for FEMA. Thirty-one cities signed on to it.
Wow.
Which is very good.
And where is, where is the actual piece of equipment housed? How, or how does that work?
So we're trying to locate it in a place that would be central. So probably this, the seventy-seven corridor is where we would locate it. So county has some facilities along there. There's one in close to New Bern Heights. Also, Cuyahoga Heights has a fire station there. So there's a couple options are that we'd like to place it in a spot that would be, you know, equal distance for responses.
The vehicle hasn't been delivered yet, so it's-
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was just curious. I mean, I remember you talking about it not that long ago, actually.
The, the expectation is possibly the end of the year. All of these vehicles we're dealing with, much like the police vehicles, service vehicles, chassis issues are problematic. So those all seem to be delayed.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Any, any further questions to the chief? All right. So I'd like to entertain a motion for the authority to enter into this reimbursement agreement in Cuyahoga County to purchase the equipment that the chief has been describing. Could we have such a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Zatra?
Yes.
Ms. Welman?
Yes.
Mr. Daga?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentili?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from any committees, any department heads, any committees have anything to report?
Planning and zoning, not, right?
Yeah.
What did planning and zoning meet since last time?
Mm-hmm.
Retirement.
An update on that meeting?
I'm trying to remember.
That was the one where I wasn't-
Retired by town?
Oh, you weren't there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wasn't there. I know, I know what it was about, but-
Tell me what it was about and I'll tell you, I'll report.
It was about-
It feels really long ago for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Senior living.
It was about the senior living on the Ursula, on-
Cedar and Brainerd.
On the Cedar, yeah, on the Cedar and Brainerd, not Ursula.
Oh, 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 yes, okay. Yeah, yeah. A lot of council was at the meeting. Yes, there, there had been a, the only thing I think on the agenda was there'd been a-
Not all of them.
There had been a request by a prospective developer who wanted to acquire some land in the townhouse district at Cedar and Brainerd, west of Brainerd. And their proposal, it was a very preliminary proposal that they had requested to just appear before the planning commission and basically feel out the planning commission, I think, is to smell the wind about it, so to speak. And they presented, their proposal would involve, as it stood, expanding a new zoning district into part of the U-one area by a couple of lots. There was, they made their proposal. I, it was kind of a, a neutral response at best, I think, that they received. And-
Really tall building, too.
Yeah, the building was pretty tall. I think it was four or five story.
Five stories, I think.
Five story building.
At least on one side, yeah.
And it was pointed out to them that we do not have five story buildings in Pepper Pike. And they said, thank you very much, and they went away. And I have not heard from them yet. They said they wanted to consider the interesting questions they had gotten that evening from the commission and from some audience members. I know there were several council members at the, at the meeting. And typically, you, we may never hear from them again. That's my feeling. Tony?
Are we done with that?
Yeah.
I was unable to attend the architectural meeting on Friday. I thought I'd be able to be there, but I couldn't. I think that was maybe two weeks ago? Anyway.
No, last week.
The one was Friday?
The one was-
Was it last Friday?
It was just this past Friday.
Okay, well, anyway, do you, does anybody know what?
I did not attend it.
What on earth?
Um, with Madonna Creator Housing?
Yes.
I did hear Tara, don't quote me on this, she said that the ABR asked for some, some changes to some of their designs. And I don't want to elaborate because I was not there.
Okay.
That's just-
Does she do the minutes?
Yes, she does.
Okay.
I don't know.
I'll, I'll contact her and see if I can get the minutes.
That sounds good.
I, I, something came up and I was unable to attend.
Okay. And let's go to our department head, Sam. Don, I was Shaker project.
It's moving along well. We're still, First Energy continues to be the piece that's driving the, the rest of the work, but they continue to show up and continue to move poles and they're making good progress. So we're hoping that, that we're going to be on, keeping with our schedule.
Okay.
We've been really fortunate with weather. They've had some, a pretty mild spring. It was wet at the beginning of spring, but it's been really good lately, so.
Okay.
They're moving along. I also wanted to mention the Gates Mills Detention Basin project that Regional is working on. They're hoping to be substantially complete by the end of this month.
End of May?
End of May.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Yeah, the, the generator, I think somebody asked at the meeting.
Right.
That, that should be definitely gone before-
The non-silent, silent generator.
It's needed in another location from, according to the contractors.
Well, that means they're going away. That's good.
It's good news, though.
And they're, they're, they actually had good weather, too, to try to button it up, so.
Good, good. Have they paved the road yet or no?
They did some paving work. It's, it's, it's open to traffic, but we're, we're talking about the finished surface on that piece.
The asphalt plants are open, though, aren't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's, we can be paved.
Okay.
I do have one question about Shaker, just curiosity. So the timeline, it's, it appears that they're really winding it up on the more eastern portion.
The, the western piece is actually closer to City Hall here.
Oh, that's further along.
That's further along.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, what's going to have to happen is about getting in too much minutia. Once the poles, once CEI finishes all their transfers, then the other two utilities that are on the poles will show up and move their stuff over. And then the poles can come out on the eastern portion. And then we can do the storm sewer work on the eastern portion.
On the eastern portion.
On the eastern portion. And that will really kind of be the last of the underground work that's going to occur on the job.
And then when will the paving happen, do you think? Later in the summer?
The paving's probably August, September, October.
So will there be a gap then or it will be continuous?
It, there will be a gap because it'll be a different contractor. We haven't actually bid the paving work out yet because we didn't want to bid it now.
Sure, I remember, I remember you said that.
Right, so we're, we're getting closer to being able to pull the trigger on bidding it. And I think we've seen asphalt prices actually drop a little bit, so it's probably good that we've waited.
I just get a lot of questions about when, when it will be open, so I, I-
Yes. Unfortunately, that first piece to close, you know, to, to the detour is going to be the last piece to open, so.
Because of how the CEI chose to do the poles.
Right.
And just to be clear, Don, since we're still waiting for CEI to do its transfer and then the lower utilities to move their things.
Yes.
And then we can start on a lot of the storm sewer work.
Storm sewer work, right.
That storm sewer work is going to happen between now and the end of the month?
No, 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 that, that's, I didn't say that for, that's, that's the Gates Mills Boulevard, not Shaker.
Oh, okay.
Gates Mills Boulevard is the regional sewer district project.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the eastern, when the Shaker Boulevard project is intended to be finished.
Oh, no, that's, it's probably end of July.
End of July. Okay. Is any storm sewer been put in or is it?
The portion from Lander going west toward City Hall, that storm work is all done.
Is done. So you're waiting, it's on the other side?
On the other side. And they did portions of it. They did some catch basin work, things that they could do that weren't underneath the poles. So they, they've sort of prepped stuff in anticipation of poles.
So will we maintain the detour on the western portion then during that interim period?
Yes.
Or we will?
Well, they'll still be doing utility work that entire time. So as soon as, as soon as the, as they're working, CEI crews are working on that structure. Now, it's not as, it's easier to cut through because there's not as many big pieces of equipment, but there's still, it's still an active construction site.
Gotcha.
And then once those poles are out, then they will go, the storm work actually goes pretty fast. It's not as deep.
Okay.
And they will, they will march through that pretty quick.
But you're looking at the Shaker project extending into July sometime?
I would say yes.
And the one-way traffic will be maintained that whole period?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It sounds like two-way traffic, what might happen to the west.
It, it may. And then we'll have to see timing wise. I don't want to make that announcement until we have a better timeline from the contractor. And there are some areas like right at Lander where there's some utility stuff that still has to happen, so.
Mm-hmm.
We'll see what we get.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're all by yourself tonight there. Gentlemen, anything? Okay. Very quickly, most of you were in attendance, including the people in the audience. But we had the State of the City address earlier this week. I was very pleased with the attendance. Last year, the attendance was distressingly low for who showed up. And this year, the city took over its own handling of the, of the event. It's uncertain, unclear what has occurred to the Pepper Pike Civic League. I spoke with a couple of their members afterwards. And I remain unclear as to what happened to the Pepper Pike Civic League. And it may or may not be a functioning organization anymore, is my impression. So that's very sad after many decades of wonderful service and purpose that they've had. We have many people in this room who have served on the Civic League. And it's very sad if they are, if as an organization, it's just going away. I hope not. And I hope that they're successful in getting their feet under them again and being reestablished. But in the meanwhile, we took over and we had a pretty robust appearance of residents who came this year. And that was gratifying to see and shows that people still care about their city and they show up to hear about it, which is terrific.
Mayor, I congratulate you on getting the word out because I would probably attend that meeting every year. And this is the first time I can remember getting a notice of it and enough time to plan to get there. So by taking over the event ourselves, I think that was a good-
Yeah, I, I think we'll probably-
Getting the word out, I think, helped that, well, clearly helped that attendance.
Yeah. We actually would have had the event, I think, earlier in the year, but we kept waiting for the usual contact from the Civic League about it. And it just never came. And we reached out and were unsuccessful having any effective communication with them. And finally, I just said, we're going to do it ourselves. We're not, we have to get this done. Does anyone know what's, what's going on with Civic League? This is the first I've heard that they're in some difficulty. Is it financial issue or is it? No, I don't think it's financial.
It's a volunteering issue. I think if you remember the candidates night, hardly anybody was there. See, they do two events, candidates night and State of the City.
Right.
And if you recall, you and I were at the candidates night and there was hardly anyone there.
There's hardly anyone there.
Yeah. So I think it's more a volunteering issue. They're having a hard time recruiting people who want to do something. I was on the Civic League and then it was very active and vibrant and got oatmeal cookies, oatmeal raisin cookies and-
I miss my cookies. We did not, we did not provide snacks at our version of the State of the City.
I saw this nice link posted of the, Mr. Newell-
Yeah.
Videotaped and, and shared on the city website for those who missed it.
Yeah, and kudos and great appreciation to Scott for stepping up and doing his usual outstanding job of filming the event. We were able, by the end of the next day, Becky was able to get it up on the website. And it's not simply pointing your camera at something and turning the on button. No, Scott, no, puts it together like a presentation. And Riley, thank you.
You're welcome.
Your, your skill is evident when you, when you see it. So we have coming, well, we'll see each other again before the end of the month. But the Memorial Day commemoration, of course, is set and scheduled. We'll have the high school band here with the Lionettes, their flag team. And our speaker this year is, I, this will be our first enlisted person coming, but it's quite an enlisted person. This gentleman is a retired Chief Sergeant Major of the Air Force, which is the highest ranking non-officer position in the military. And a fellow named Frank Baba. And Frankie's been, he's been flying and taking care of missions since the first Gulf War, I think. So he's had tremendous experience and might look forward to whatever. He's, he's a man of few words, but I look forward to whatever he has to say. And that's about where we stand right now. So, council, anything? Okay. Audience comments, anything? Okay.
I have a quick question on the State of the City address.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Newell, for posting that, but it's missing the entire commenting question section at the end. And I was just wondering why that weren't posted.
We just, it was an editing decision. We just, it wasn't the State of the City, it was more of a town hall type thing. We just didn't post it. It was a big editing project to try to get that together, too.
Yeah, there, there's some difficulty, I, getting audio from, the, the mayor was mic'd. And so the audio for the last portion is not very good.
That was, you know, there were a lot of really significant points brought up on many sides for different issues.
Right.
I think that would have been effective for the community. We missed it to have that, be part of that discussion.
It was a nice discussion. I enjoyed the discussion. But as Scott said, the audience did not have a microphone and-
Maybe in the future, we could add a, add on its microphones. Since, you know, it seems like that, that one should be taken over by a different group running it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to have audio, too.
I can't see. I see a hand, I don't see a person. Oh, it's Mannan.
Manny Naff, twenty-six thirty-two Sound Center. Couple of items on here. My first item was to thank Scott for putting out that video so fast. And it was music at the beginning and music at the end and things like that. Very professional.
Thank you.
And my question is also- And my question is also going to be in regards to the audience, you know, feedback at the end. I just assumed that you just didn't have enough time to first get it out there, you know, right away, but you had enough audience stuff that you may be able to add on to it. I know that you were doing, you tried to do it with your cell phone and stuff like that, or?
I did.
No volume at all, or?
It's, in a situation like that, unless you plan for it and have a, actually have a crew there, it's very difficult to do audio that covers an entire room like that. Yeah, I tried to do it with my phone, it didn't turn out well.
Thank you for what you did. Much appreciated. Next item that I had here, and really truly heartwarming in regards to the discussion, you know, today, it's been years, okay, in regards to items that a lot of residents have been identifying, you know, in regards to, you need to follow a process in here. We have a road and infrastructure committee up here. And I think the splash, you know, pad, I think is a great idea. One of the places we go, there's a splash pad right next door, and the kids have a ball on it, things like that. But there needs to be an overall, long-range plan. We have a survey, okay? There's nothing on the agenda right now. Any agendas, for council to talk about that survey and to develop a long-range plan based on that survey and put it into order, you know, priority order based on finances and timing and other items on here, what's really wanted and what we want to go after. And like, you know, and you mentioned, you know, not just, you know, running after, you know, grants and things like that. What does the city really want to do in a long-range, you know, plan? Please, folks, we need a long-range plan. We've got a great job in regards to the finances. We've got $15 million in the bank right now. We have $29 million or $27 million in five more years on here. There should be a long-range plan that prioritizes what we want to do. And when somebody comes up with a good idea, you know, the splash, you know, pad could be a great idea, but it needs to fit in and go into the right, even that long-range plan is a dynamic document and could, you know, vary as different things happen, but it needs to be developed and then maintained, you know, on there. So could we, so I'll just leave the question up. For next meeting, could we have a major agenda item, you know, put on the council's agenda to discuss the survey and come up with, you know, starting, just to start off conversation in regards to develop, okay, what do we want to do? What is this plan? What, what was the number one item? Was it the trail down Gates Mills Boulevard? Was it, you know, purchasing part of the Beach Brook property? Was it sidewalks? Was it, you know, a splash pool on here? So please, we need that long-range plan. We need council to have a robust conversation and a robust decision in regards to what the priorities are. And then publish it, you know, to the, you know, to the public. And then, you know, the last item is, and I'm going to give you a whole copy of the, Scott, if you don't want to just passing that around. This is a copy of the agenda that was published for last month's city council, this April 26th. I got to tell you, the agenda is the lowest bar that anybody can get in regards to, the agenda talks about item number three, committee reports and department head reports. Item number four is mayor. Item number five is council. We had a presentation by Road and Infrastructure Committee, you know, that talked about Lander Circle, talked about sidewalks, we talked about the survey, we talked about the grant application, OD and R. So what you talked about before in regards to, since you made the meetings that we had, you know, on Monday night, the State of the City, it was well-attended, the meeting was well-done, you know, by yourself on there. Other than we can mention the council people and they're right up front. But the item was, three notices went out specifically. You know, Tony, today was like reading my mind, the person, three notices went out to people before that meeting. And with that, they knew about the meeting, they had a chance to schedule themselves to get there, and a lot of people did get there. Okay, now look at this agenda that was published, you know, for last council meeting. This is a shame in regards to the things that we talked about and the things that people said in the meeting, and that's why I was hoping we had some of the audience comments. There was one gentleman that said, his comment was, I would like to participate more in the city. And the response that was given back, you know, to the person, you know, by the mayor, was, I don't know how to do that for you other than to tell you, you got to come to all the consultants. And that was the exact, you know, word-for-word, you know, response on there. And with that, people would have come, you know, to, you know, to hear about Lander Circle, they would have come to hear about the sidewalks, they would have come to hear about OD and R, you know, report on here. But to have an agenda like this, you know, is a total disservice to the city. So as well as we're doing in a lot of other areas, there's always things that you can improve on. Please, you got to do something there. And I just ended with this, you know, on here. I just have the one copy and ask she wants to put this in there. This is the agenda that's published by, I just went on before the meeting to solo the council meeting. They list out all the things that are going to be discussed in the, you know, on the agenda, who's going to do the presentations, all the attachments are attached to the agenda. If you go online, it's all live, all the background information, all the presentations. This presentation, you know, Tim Smith was great, okay? No one could see it, okay? Especially for people that are watching this meeting on, you know, for the YouTube thing, okay? No one could see it. Their, their items are all there for everybody to see and no ahead-of-time question to be done. And it's, everything is located in the one spot. So, you know, please, take a look at these agendas. If you're looking for people to get involved, and we've got more people here than we've had in a long time on here, and with that, people want to get involved. But if they're going to get an agenda that has nothing on there, you're not going to get involved. So thank you for the time and please, we need to address that.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I do want to note that, just as Mr. Naft observed, the council did have a robust discussion there about a plan, how to go forward with the strategic plan. Because we talked about the one item on it, which was the pedestrian pathways, walkways. We had a very robust discussion about that. There's, now, and that conversation is underway. I can't remember if Manny was at the meeting or not, but, so you were here and you heard and you just recited, sir, that, oh, we never talked about that. We haven't had a discussion about the community survey. Well, we have had a conversation, please.
Where's your plane?
Manny, you're out of order. Be quiet.
Okay. Let me answer your conversation.
No, now you're going to sit there until I finish talking, okay? The, we have had that discussion, and I object, and I resent someone suggesting that this council has not begun a consideration. The survey results came out the month before at our meeting, where we had a conference, where we had a presentation of the survey, and then we had a road and infrastructure meeting where there were several council members present at that and discussed the number one item on that survey, which was the pedestrian pathways. And then at the next council meeting, council had a robust discussion about the pathways, pedestrian walkways. So for anyone to style the comment that this council or this administration is not considering and working towards planning and how are we going to deal with the responses from the community survey, I think that's a false narrative. And I reject it because I don't, I think the people at this dais have been much more responsible than that. Okay, now, let's, Jean. No, 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 this is not, this is not a back and forth, Jean. Do you have a comment? Do you have a comment?
Jean Gass calling up, they had a word wrote, and I would like to say that it seems to me, and I didn't talk to you beforehand, but my question is, to put it in a question, this splash park or whatever, you, did you go about it ahead of time? I mean, the council people?
No, we just presented, we presented it tonight. It was presented tonight.
So this is the first that?
Some council people had heard about it? No, no, some people had heard about it. Some had heard, some had not, probably. We were just coming up with the idea. It's not being considered tonight, so it's fine.
Okay, my question, another part of that question is, it seems to me, and I don't know if you agree, so that's the question part, there, it's kind of stale. I feel like our, our, you know, council and it just seems kind of stale. I don't know if this is a function of the council people. We just sit there and, I mean, it's, it's a mayor-driven meetings, right? Is that right? I mean, I'm asking you a question.
Everyone, everyone is free to, everyone in these, Jean, do you want me, I'll answer your question. Everyone at these meetings, I head the meeting, everyone at the council is free and do participate as they choose during the course of the meeting.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, I still, I still feel, or I believe, that this is a very stale meeting with a three-line agenda and, you know, using our money or grant money, two weeks ago to apply, and we missed that deadline last year. It's like, robust, I am so sick of hearing that word, robust. I just believe that there needs to be more involvement. You are by counseling, you know, for you. That's my question, would you be more involved, to make it a question?
Yeah, I thought the council gave, thank you. I thought the council gave some important input back to the proposal tonight. We're going to deal with it. If we hit this grant date, great. If we don't, that's okay. The world isn't going to end because of it. As I explained before, because of the survey, we held back wanting to generate about a project, simply to hear people say, oh, well, let's see what the survey says. So this is basically the first meeting that the presentation from, that was put together by the staff was ready to be presented, and it was presented. And if it's too late for council to be comfortable considering it, that's okay. That's the way it is. Ma'am, in the back?
Hi, I'm Chris Barber. I'm Shaker Boulevard. I've been a resident for about 17 years now, so I kind of knew all this stuff, but I never felt before that I can get involved. And the only way I found out information was from a friend's mother who lives down the street from us. So along with Manny, and I think what Jean is trying to say is, if there were more details in the minutes, like what you're going to talk about, so people don't really have a lot of time to come to these, but if you detailed what you were saying on your agenda, like specifics, I mean, had we not talked to Mrs. Brennan, we would never have known that sidewalks may be coming up in the future. And then when I did come to that meeting, I felt like it was a done deal. So I think it would be important if council could do something to be less minute, give a little bit more detail for people to come, you know? I mean, I don't think the agenda.
The agenda you're talking about.
Right, the agenda, with, just like the basics, really helps people in the city to get involved.
Okay, I appreciate your comments and thank you. And I think it's certainly something that needs to be taken into consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
Paul Hope, Shaker Boulevard, great presentation. My question to council is, if they get this splash pad, you know, motion going, are they going to take into considerations? Because I was a lifeguard for 15 years, so we had like a lot of fecal incidents. So my question is, what is the, if the council is going to look into, how they're going to deal with people pooping on the splash pads? You know, kids in their diapers, they run around the water, even if they don't have swim diapers on, they both leak. So my question is, will you guys look into that, how to keep the fecal matter out of the filters? Is there always so much chlorine put in the water?
Right.
All of that?
I think it's a good, it's a very important question, and it's one of the questions that the service director, I think, is going to have to look into and inquire places like Lynn Hurst, how they deal with it. So I think it's a good comment. Thank you. Okay, anything else?
What we'll do is we'll look at places that are friends been in mind and try to compare them with some that are not, like I believe Hudson's in the middle of town. So, I mean, just to be fair, because if it's in, if it's in an enclosure and locked, that's an easy way of taking care of a problem. Just close everybody out of it. We don't have that, so how do they deal with it in other places? And is it really a problem? I know I've been a public pool, so I know where those are.
Yeah, you can think I have that.
No, a few times. All righty. Next, a councilman has asked for a motion to adjourn to executive session for discussing the appointment and compensation of a municipal employee. So we need a motion to adjourn for that. There'll be no further city business conducted following the rejoining of the public session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Atra?
Yes.
Ms. Welton?
Yes.
Mr. Daga?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gensely?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
All right, we stand in adjournment for executive session, and thank you all for being here tonight.